To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna open public comment at six oh one. Do we have anybody for public comment? All right, that will stay open for thirty minutes. We have Winnicott Pride. Zoe is not here, so.
Yes, unfortunately Zoe is not able to be here this evening, so we can move right on to minutes.
Oh, okay, then we'll go to, yeah. Uh, minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, regular meeting? Every, we were all here on the eighteenth, weren't we?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so the three of us can vote. All right, so if I can get a motion from either one of you.
Motion to approve the minutes from the December eighteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
Oh, second?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, superintendent's report?
Sure. Um, my report is fairly brief here in the start of the new year, but we will be meeting with local legislators on Tuesday, January twenty first, from six to eight in this room. Um, that is an open meeting, but it's a discussion with our legislators from the region jointly with SAU ninety to talk about how, um, those proposed bills, and I think right now there are about two hundred and fifty that pertain in some fashion to public education, um, and to discuss how they might impact schools and our local communities and, um, kind of set up mechanisms for communicating with each other throughout the legislative season. Uh, our next joint board meeting will be the end of January, January thirtieth at six, and so the operations committee, committee will be meeting before that to set the agenda. Uh, policy is also coming up, and that meeting will be to finish the legislative updates for this year that went into effect, so there were many, so we're still catching up on policy for those. And then I just noted filing information for the districts, um, for open positions, and so for Winnicott, there is a three-year board member term, that's a seat from Northampton, currently filled by Tamra. Um, there's also a three-year term for a Northampton budget committee member, that position is currently filled by Jamie Marston. And anyone who's interested in, uh, applying for either of those can contact the school district clerk, Tracy Hamilton, at the Hampton Town Office.
Great, thank you. Principals' report?
Good evening. Um, most of the report is what I will be including in the annual report, uh, in a couple of weeks. Um, contains some of the data, uh, that we typically present over the last five years. Things have been pretty consistent, um, throughout, our graduation rate increased slightly. Um, dropout rate is, uh, one percent, um, so from that standpoint, we're still doing well. Um, typically about sixty-five percent of our students do pursue, uh, college education after high school. Um, that's remained consistent over the last few years. Um, SAT performance, um, we continue to do well. Clearly, um, you know, Winnicott, uh, reading and math. Scores, I mean, math scores are low across the state and the nation, um, so we'll continue working on that, but we do have things in place for the SATs. And the, again, the SAT, as students can take the SAT for college, but it's also the state assessment that all juniors take, um, in April and May. Um, as, uh, the science, uh, state testing. AP scores are continuing to increase, the number of students taking AP, um, classes has increased in number of exams, so that's good news. Um, so if there's any questions about the data, uh, but again, I'll be prepared in the annual report that goes, um, will be before the, um, in the voting booth and stuff like that.
Great. Anybody have any questions?
Bill, did you say our dropout rate is one percent?
Hmm.
That's amazing. I mean, that, that, I, I commend you on that.
Thank you, and again, it's the teachers and the opportunities and the pathways that we have at the school, so.
I, I've never heard of another school in New Hampshire at that rate, there probably is or are, but, um, that's impressive.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Communications committee.
Curriculum report?
Oh.
Oh, we're not, we're not great done yet. Sorry, we're not done with that yet.
I was done with my data. Now we have good, I mean.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, we've, uh, two donations that we received, the Hampton Academy and Winnicott High School Alumni Association donated one thousand dollars to support the ROTC program. And then Just For Success donated, uh, five hundred and eighty dollars in gift cards, uh, for students in need. This is for clothing, food needs and hygiene needs. Um, enrollment numbers are fairly consistent. I think I filled in the calendar through March, so. Tomorrow night is the trimester two parent conferences, so technically we're halfway through the school year. The talent show is this Saturday. No school on Monday, uh, looking forward to that. And then a week from Saturday, we have the winter semi-formal dance. Um, and then a week from Tuesday, we have our students, our grade ten students going to SST for the sneak peek. Um, and in February, we have the deliberative session. On February twelfth, the class of twenty twenty eight.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, oh, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
No, twenty-nine, you're right.
Oh.
Twenty, twenty-nine, class of twenty twenty-nine, see, that's why. Course information night, and then we also have the step-up day for the same class of twenty twenty-nine on, on March fifth, so. Again, time goes by pretty quickly. And then the other thing I do have is we did receive a certificate of inclusion for the Special Olympics, New Hampshire. And we also received, um, a donation from them, I don't have it recorded here, five hundred dollars, uh, that we would use for our unified team.
And then the Special Olympics, we're hosting, right, this year, is that, that correct? This spring?
I'll find out.
I thought, I spoke to her today, 'cause she called to see if I was gonna do the plunge, and I said, not this year. Once was enough, you don't need to do that more than once.
So, yeah, which is, I mean, that's great news, so.
But I think it was, um, I thought that we were gonna be doing something on campus, but I could be not.
We're doing something, um, with Dover, some type of thing with the unified teams here.
Right, yeah, here, yeah, I think that's, yeah, 'cause Dover did, couldn't do it this year, so.
Yeah.
That could be, I could be just, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so.
Yeah. It's late.
It's a busy place, we keep busy.
It's a busy, okay. Are you done now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll keep on going.
All right. Bill did say be quick tonight, 'cause this is a short meeting, so I won't go into detail, you have the report in front of you, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. I apologize, I forgot this was a short meeting, so I, my intention was to give you a presentation around our finalized school growth plan, as well as its connection to the portrait of a learner and how our plans are to roll that out. So I guess that's waiting another month, so you'll get that next month, I promise this time. So, um, look forward to that. I also wanted to mention, ooh, is my time up? So, I wanted to mention that the lookup campaign, you've heard a little bit about that, and, um, I wanted to let you know, I, I don't know if Bill mentioned this when he was going over the things, we're hosting the Screenagers, um, showing that movie next Thursday, the twenty-third. Um, so we've been throwing out, um, information for our community to participate in that, so that is happening. Um, we're also doing a number of Talking Tuesdays and Phone Free Fridays that are encouraging students to look up from their phones and to talk during lunch, and encouraging our staff to, um, rely less on our digital means and, and do more interactive activities on those days, so. Seems to be really popular, kids and adults alike are really responding to that, so they're continuing to develop these plans as the year goes by. I gave you the timeline for our, uh, course, um, our scheduling timeline, Bill mentioned a few things that we're doing, um, but the rest in detail are, is there, so take a look at that if you have any questions. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out, as I said before, I'm gonna continue to give you this data from some of our support services, so our, uh, our technology integrator, our ELO coordinator and our, uh, from our library, Kate, they're all providing me on a regular basis some insight as to how they're functioning and the support they're providing for staff and students. So I'll continue to give you those updates, again, that's in there, so I'm not gonna go into detail. But one thing I did wanna point out is we are forming a steering committee, um, in, for our library. We are in need of, um, new furniture, looking at that space from a new lens, and, and as, you know, technology increases and the usage of the library changes, we have to respond in how we're setting that space up. So, we thought it would be really helpful if we could form, uh, a committee of all stakeholders, so student representation, staff, um, community members, and we're looking for a school board member who would like to be a part of that, so it would help us, again, define what changes we wanna make physically in the space and, and, you know, things beyond that and how we're using the library. So, I'm looking at you because your name came up, Tamra, if you're interested, but certainly I open it, um, up to all school board, no pressure, think about it, um, but we'll send out a follow-up email, um, to the group.
Thank you.
And if you, if anybody is interested, we'll give you some ideas of how often we're meeting and, and what the goals of that committee are, so I wanted to point that out, but other than that, um, everything else is in the report, and I look forward to giving you a presentation next month.
So, next month is also a short meeting because it's the deliberative session.
Okay.
So, um, I know the joint board meeting, we'll be talking about Portrait of a Learner at the end of January, so it might be an option for you to present there.
Okay.
Um, share with this board in advance of that and present at that meeting.
Yeah, I could send it to you and.
Yeah.
It's entirely up to you if you think that's an appropriate time to do that, or, I could make it brief on, I could try to do a brief version of it in February.
I think it'd be nice to have all the schools see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, what day is that? Two weeks.
Thirtieth.
Okay, we can make that happen.
Just, yeah, again, I mean, that's obviously up to the board, I just recognize that that February meeting will be brief, so maybe a brief presentation at both, but I think it, it kinda keeps it out in, in the public view, and it's important.
Everybody sends to the high school, so.
Correct.
Might be helpful to learn about the high school.
Yeah.
I agree.
That makes sense, so I, either way, I'll keep it brief, how's that?
Okay.
And I can give you guys, I can give you guys the full thing digitally and then.
Right, but then, yeah, I think having it at the joint would be amazing if you can make that work.
If there's any particular follow-up from that joint board presentation, maybe we can talk about it in more detail at our, at our meeting.
Okay.
And go from there.
All right, can I ask one question before you leave?
Sure.
So, in terms of the phones in school, is there any conversation about limiting somewhat kids' access to phones during the school day?
I'm gonna let Bill take this, I have some thoughts, but I, I feel like, can I go ahead?
Well, the, the policy is that students cannot use the phones in the classroom, so from a teacher's standpoint, teacher management is controlled there. Um, during passing time and during lunch and during breaks, the students can use the phone. For the most cases, I mean, you know, since we started this campaign, um, last year, uh, there's been more of an awareness and students seem to be putting their phones away. Um, some teachers do use the phones in the classroom as a, uh, technology device, but for the most cases, um, students know, and I've sent several messages out just to remind parents and students not to use the phones in the classroom, so I think overall, that has limited it, there's nothing else that we can do unless we do something like some of those cases and things like that, but then it's a accountability and monitoring. So I think right now the goal is, you know, I view it that it would trying to teach these students to be young adults, to be responsible, um, and this is part of being that, you know, being responsible.
I just know there's a lot of talk in the community.
Yeah.
About how do we start to limit that during this school.
We've, we've had a lot of success, as he's pointing out, like, just by drawing attention to it, I think for years we've, we've left it under the control of the staff, which we wanna continue to do, like, if there's a need to use, uh, use them in the classroom, then we are, we're allowing that, that teacher to pr, to use their best judgment in that respect. But I think at the beginning of this year, one of the differences was we actually, as a, as a, as a school, talked about it at the very beginning of the year and said, here's the expectations, here's a reminder, this is the policy, this is, it's okay to put your foot down and say, you know, we're not using them in the classroom, here are some, um, opportunities for you to, like, like the phone garages and things, we provided those for staff. Just by virtue of reiterating the policy that's already in place and allowing the, the, the teachers, um, the ability to make those decisions and, and, and get some support from their fellow colleagues in doing so, has really made a big difference. So I, 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 to his point, I think the policy that we have in place is a good one, um, I think that we have to just continue to have a conversation so we're always on the same page in how we're implementing those, um, throughout the school, but I, I do think, I do, I think, I do think that she's, that we're having, we're seeing more success in this, in the things that we're doing with the lookup campaign too, is making a real impact, um, from a student's perspective too.
One concern I've had, um, I guess, maybe it's more from a personal perspective, but, um, I'm afraid sometimes that if, if we're too draconian, you know, if we say, if we just limit things and say no. There are, um, uh, examples of kids who use their phone as a medical device, you know, I think anybody who is taking, you know, medications or on some sort of, um, protocol sometimes can handle that sort of under the radar if they just have their phone, um, with them, and I'm just saying that as.
We use Google Translate a lot for some of our students who.
Right, right, exactly, so I just, I, I want us to be careful to, you know, sort of honor what, what's working and, and not, um, think that just by eliminating the phones, we're gonna, you know, tackle the obvious problems, so. I don't know, I just wanted to make sure that I, what on the record is, you know, saying, you know, proceed with caution.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah, I appreciate that, we've, and we've said as much too in the, in the research, but, yeah.
I know, I know, and this is, it's, and we've been very supportive of that, so.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, special services. Jimmy?
Amy's not here, but I'm happy to give my report, which is included under the SAU reports up above, would you like me to do that?
That'd be great, thanks.
I can just talk about.
Sorry, yes.
The score, yeah. Excuse me, um, unified basketball is underway, um, actually, they beat Portsmouth yesterday, and, um, I'm just waiting for them to let, let us know when they're gonna play the faculty.
'Cause that one we're all going to.
I know, I mean, the students, they're very excited, you know, and, and the day they play the games, they're so excited walking down the hallway and stuff like that, so it's, it's been great.
While we're putting requests out for board members, Amy mentioned to me that she'd love to have a board member on the faculty unified, uh, game when that happens, so.
Okay.
She's putting up the.
Basketball game?
People to participate, yeah.
Nose game.
Well, hopefully it did win.
It's only been forty-five years since I played, but hey, sure, no, okay.
I think Desiree looks like she's a good basketball fan.
It's been a minute, I'm gonna take a couple trips to the Y, see if I still have it, we'll have to get back to you on that.
Your sideline cheering will be more than satisfactory.
That too, we need everybody there for that too, right. Um, I have some policy updates for you that you've seen these policy changes, or you will see one of them coming soon, but there's a few of them that relate to student support, so we've asked principals in, uh, either January or February during their staff meetings to provide some, um, training updates to increase awareness about these, I'll just hit some of the highlights for you. One of them is around reporting child abuse and neglect, uh, big changes that, um, strengthening the accountability for educators and prohibiting educators from making these reports anonymously moving forward, and also making sure that we're including the information in the handbook or the district's website, and the new part is to have a sign posted readily visible to students about, uh, reporting child abuse and neglect. In terms of the policy regarding education of children in foster care, there's been a little bit of a flip for leading best interest determination meetings. We were formerly relying on DCYF to lead those discussions, and now the district will lead the process and invite, um, DCYF to the table, so that's a little change for our, our folks. And then the last one is around the education of youth experiencing homelessness. The big change there is that they want us to post a list of the duties of the liaison, and, um, that's essentially a job description, so we provided every principal with a, uh, eight and a half by eleven piece of paper, it's a very long description, so you have to get up close to read it, but having that posted, um, in, uh, a key area of the school, so it's visible to folks, also making sure that our liaisons are showing evidence of coordination and community collaboration. And, um, another change is that updating the policy so that we include the privacy of the living situation, we won't be reporting out on whether our kids are living in a motel, um, living in a campground or doubled up, they, they wanna keep that information as private as possible. And the liaison for, um, the Winnicott High School, as you know, is Tally Westerberg, she does an amazing job, and she supports our other, um, liaisons across the district who are Annalee Dunn, our district-wide social worker, and Patrice Baker, our outreach specialist, and so the three of them are a wonderful trio that support all of the students experiencing, um, issues related to, um, housing and other insecurities. Any questions about that? I link the job description, the, the duties on the bottom of your report in case you wanted to look at that. Um, the only other thing I wanted to share with you is, again, giving another plug for our partnership with the Cook Center and ParentGuidance.org, lots of amazing resources for families to get related to parenting, um, issues with, uh, children and adolescents, um, wonderful support. In addition to the free resources, thanks to a partnership with, uh, and a grant from Youth Home in New Hampshire, we were able to add the parent coaching, free, no cost to our families, weekly coaching with a, um, mental health, uh, clinician, um, once a week, uh, virtual, it's on, you know, on, uh, on Zoom, and then they also have access to that coach by text or by phone twenty-four seven. The information that I received from Cook is that since we launched in twenty twenty-three, thirty-six families have participated in the actual coaching, which is very significant, um, it's a commitment on their part to get involved in that beyond all of the free resources, and currently, thirty-three of those families continue to be registered, and so that is really remarkable, and we're really pleased with that, uh, so we wanna get to shout that out. One other piece is that, um, linked in here is the latest newsletter, the January newsletter, I send these to the principals monthly, and they send them out in their newsletters, uh, they're getting better and better. This month is about practical advice and strategies for common behavioral issues, um, and just helping in general parenting and concerns that parents might have, so these are a wonderful resource and glad to be able to put them in the hands of our families. That's it for me.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just one question, um, I'm just curious if you have any, had any reaction to the, um, I don't know if it was an official announcement or a, a press release statement from, um, Education Secretary Edelblut about covering the sixteen million dollars for special ed that was supposedly, uh, gonna be cut, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, any mon, any money's good money, but does it, does it, is it like a drop in the bucket?
Yes, basically.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, yeah.
I mean, we did get a revised amount on the sped aid that was a little more than what was predicted. Um, we, we shared that information out, um, it, it, it was an increase, it just wasn't what we were initially expecting, so it was better than what they had predicted we were going to get now that we've received it. Um, a- again, it was a little bit better than what was initially said, which was a significant decrease in sped aid.
Right, right, right. And how do you, uh, see that impacting special ed going forward?
Well, we'll see, I think that the legislature will take up, you know, um, there's a lot of talk about that issue moving forward, not only in New Hampshire but across the country, and I think this is something that the costs of special education are not going to decrease.
Right.
And we are seeing, um, our kids come in with needs that we're required to provide and we want to provide, so, um, it's, it's something that will continue to be on all of our minds and our agenda, and we'll continue to meet those moving forward. We've talked about the, you know, the difficulties in New Hampshire, um, with how the budgets and how limited we are in accessing funds from the state, so. Yeah, it is, uh, it's something we all have to keep up with, if you wanna add to that narrative.
I would say I see that proposal from the commissioner, while very much appreciated as a band-aid, right? It's, it's to temporarily withdraw funds from the special, from the education trust funds in New Hampshire, um, so while that might help every district a little bit right now, um, it's not really a long-term solution, and that, that's gonna require some, um, some work, and, and it's, it's a national issue, right? We know that at the federal level, promises for special education funding that were made at the, uh, you know, when special ed was introduced back in nineteen seventy-four, where the federal government would cover forty percent, it covers a very, very small fraction of that percentage. Um, and so, uh, you know, I think it is a good time to have those conversations, I think certainly all communities in this state and, and most communities around the country are feeling, right, the pressure of finance on their, on their community budgets.
Yeah.
Um, and as we experience, um, funds being shifted, um, to education freedom accounts and, um, you know, and, and charter schools, that where we're still responsible for special education, as we see more of those funds drawn away from the traditional K-12 system, it puts more pressure on local communities to meet the needs of the children that they have, um, and, and we don't wanna short-change students, right, they're, they're our future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finance report, Matt?
Thank you, I'll also try to keep it brief, although you may want a longer finance report.
That's what we wait for, I have three weeks.
Right, um, so I have included both the, um, year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports on, um, board docs, no real change from last month, um, I'll just reiterate that, we have a, a number of accounts that are over budget, um, that includes our vocational, um, tuition, so that's for SST. Um, we have special education transportation overages, um, as well as grounds repair, um, and health insurance. Now, health insurance was, um, was under-budgeted by three hundred thousand dollars, um, to leverage the, um, healthcare expendable trust, so that was, um, expected, however, um, you know, all told, those four accounts represent, you know, roughly seven hundred thousand dollars over budget. Um, we are looking at, um, where we can, um, you know, absorb those costs elsewhere in the budget, but, um, we will certainly be looking at towards the end of the year, um, utilizing the retained, um, balance to offset those costs, um, and the healthcare expendable trust. Um, that's something we'll, um, you know, we'll monitor and make a decision, uh, or we'll, we'll make a decision until actually after the audit, but we'll, um, we'll have, we'll take a vote, um, in the, probably in May timeframe to, um, to go up to a certain amount, then we'll get the final numbers and, um, come back with that, that report, so. Um, this evening, we also have our, um, budget committee's, um, public hearing, um, for the FY twenty-six budget. Um, that will be, that's, um, intended to, um, you know, provide a update on, or a summary of the budget, and then, um, it allows the public to comment, um, on the proposal, so we do have the operating budget and the, um, single warrant article, um, to replace the, um, full roof, so that's the, uh, this entire main building and the gymnasium, um, that's phases two and three to complete that project, as you know, we started that project last year, um, and we did align that with the expiration of the bond, um, to minimize, um, taxpayer impact. Uh, so, all told, the operating budget and, um, warrant article, um, is zero point seven four percent higher than, um, than FY twenty-five, so that, that's, um, important to note because the roof warrant article is a large, um, the big-ticket item at two, two and a half million dollars, um, we, we just need to, um, you know, emphasize that, um, combined with the operating budget decrease, um, it's essentially level funded, so. Um, so that is for this evening, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I was just looking at figures, sorry, apologize. All right. Uh, facilities report is in our packet. Anything that needs to be said on that, Bill, or no?
Well, um, no, this is any questions, I mean, just maintaining the building, um, some upcoming replacement of the, uh, uh, domestic water tanks, but, um, just a typical month in facilities.
All right. Continuing business, Article One, operating budget.
So both A and B were put on the agenda in hopes that you would have five members present, um, because when you originally took your vote, there were only four, um, but you don't, so.
We're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Try again?
Okay, so motion to, we need a motion to approve the operating budget and the amount?
You don't.
No, we don't.
You don't?
No, you don't, because you already took a vote.
We took one with four, okay, good, then fine, on both of those, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so then we have the communications, wait.
A and B. A and B, yeah.
Okay, so that's fine, so then we're gonna be, um, communications committee update?
Quick update, um, to wrap up this school year, we have a couple more event calendars planned with the joint SAU, similar to what we did for, over the holidays. With the next ones coming up, we're gonna kinda up our game a little bit and get our feet wet here with doing some featured events, um, just highlighting a couple of our, um, different events going on, and then before the start of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, we plan to meet to really develop a strategy and a plan for the entire school year, um, so that's still to come. We have a, um, email address that we have set up for staff, um, students to submit stories or events that are happening in the SAU, it's communityevents@sauteenone.org. or events that are happening in the SAU, it's communityevents@sa21.org, um, but this will also be going out in an introduction email for the committee to, um, inform administrators and staff that we are here, and that's where all this events will be funneled through, so the good thing about that is it will go right to the office, so if there's something that we really wanna get out through our PR company, it will immediately be sent out, and then the other stories will meet on, and then put them in, whether it be a newsletter, continuing with the events calendars for next year.
Oh, nice, good job.
Yep, so we're, we're starting to kind of finalize things and how they're gonna work, and trying different things out, so that's kind of the idea behind these event calendars, is to, you know, just start getting word out there, and then see how things are received, and tweak it for next year.
Great, thank you, appreciate the work on that.
We're getting there.
You are. Uh, at six thirty-two, I'm now gonna close public comment. New business, we have the appointment of, uh, the school district clerk, so could I have a motion to appoint Tracy Hamilton?
Can you just explain who Tracy is?
Tracy is the ass, um, assistant clerk, uh, town clerk of Hampton.
Oh, okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Tracy Hamilton as the school district clerk through June twenty twenty-six.
Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you. So is that basically through the end of the original term?
Yes. You'll point for three-year terms, so.
We have first read on the policies.
Yes, so, I mentioned the legislative changes that went into effect, one of them was this one, um, that pertained to having a chemical safety and chemical hygiene policy and plan. Um, this would, was on the agenda for the January policy committee meeting, however, um, our districts within SAU twenty-one, well, four of the five, um, are having their state facilities, um, inspections this year, and one of the required pieces of that inspection, now that this law has gone into effect, is to have this policy in place. So if we were to wait for the policy committee to review it in January, it wouldn't get before you, because February, the meeting is so short, until March, for a first read, and then it wouldn't get a second read until April, and, um, for that reason, we're trying to, to handle this one a little earlier, so our request to you, um, would be to consider waiving, um, your, your policy on first reads, and to adopt the policy EBCH, um, this evening. The chemical safety plan is right now just provided as a template, so you know, you have an idea of what we'll be putting together, what we're looking to adopt as the policy.
Anybody have any issues with adopting the policy tonight?
I mean, just to say, this is really not new practice for us, um, we have a policy to, the po, it's, it's turning into policy what is already a practice. Um, we try not to bring toxic chemicals, to minimize the use of those, we discourage staff from bringing things in from home, um, you know, things have to be labeled, stored properly, it's, it's those expectations that you would think were already in place, and frankly, are already in place, it's just not in a formal board policy.
Okay, so could I get a motion to, to approve, is that what we wanna do, or?
Yes.
Approve policy EBCH as presented, that be good?
I can make that motion.
Thank you.
I move to approve policy EBCH, the chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan. Second?
All those in favor? And then you want the second policy, too?
No.
No, okay.
That's just provided as a template, so you understand what we're putting together.
Yeah.
Great, all right, our future meetings, we have a Winnicott Budcom public hearing tonight at seven o'clock, uh, legislative roundtable Tuesday, January twenty-first, an SAU operations committee meeting Wednesday, January twenty-second, the SAU joint board policy committee meeting Monday, January twenty-seventh, SAU twenty-one joint board meeting Thursday, January thirtieth, Winnicott School Board meeting and deliberative session is Thursday, February sixth.
Just one meeting a month.
Just one meeting a month, they tell you, one.
What time is the operations committee?
I believe five-thirty, but I can confirm.
At this point, I will need a, um.
Yes, five-thirty.
Thank you.
We need to go into pu, uh, non-public, if I could, I get a motion for that?
Motion for a roll call to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two at six thirty-six PM.
And just to note, it's under letters A and K.
My second?
Well, second?
Thank you, roll call.
Desiree Potter.
Yes.
Leslie Vaughn.
Yes.
Nicole Seiko.
Yes.
And Tamara Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.